Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Great.
Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board meeting. My name is Brian Gorman and I will be chairing this meeting. The meeting is video recorded by Westwood Media Center. If anyone else wishes to record the meeting, please identify yourself so the audience is aware. Seeing none. As a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. This includes no clapping, booing, or interruptions from the audience. In the event of a disruption, the Chair will give a warning for the first time and if occurs again, the individual will be requested to leave the meeting. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the Board. The Board will proceed to staff comments. The Board members will ask questions of the applicant. For public hearing items, the public will be given an opportunity to comment. Items that are not a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment will be at the discretion of the Board. When it is time for the public comment period, the Chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium to use the microphone. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and for the record. Please direct all comments and questions through the Chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. First, Abby, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. So, the first item on the agenda, item one, is 11 Storm Meadow Drive, earth material movement, EIDR, public hearing. Is the applicant here to present?
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Murphy. I'm a civil engineer with Beals &amp; Thomas representing the applicant, Old Grove Partners, LLC.
Yep, my name is Mark Joyce. I'm with Old Grove Partners.
So, the applicant has submitted a earth material movement special permit for the construction of a single-family home located at 11 Storm Meadow Drive, Lot 3B.
Mm-hmm.
We received review comments on our application from various staff departments as well as the town's peer review consultant, which we've addressed in a letter dated February 10th. So, I can quickly run through that if you'd like.
That'd be great.
So, Building Department basically concur that the project is not going to have any detrimental effects to the surrounding properties, wetlands, or neighborhoods. And Fire Department asked what the width of the proposed driveway is and what a fire truck would be able to drive over the subsurface infiltration chambers, which are located just off to the end of the driveway there. And the answers to those questions are the proposed driveway is approximately 14 feet in width at its narrowest point. And the subsurface infiltration system shouldn't have any issues with vehicles driving over them. It's going to have about 5 feet of cover at the side closest to the driveway. And these are designed to typically be under parking lots and other traffic loading applications, so that shouldn't be an issue. In terms of the Westwood, Denham Westwood Water District comment, just said meter pit shall be required for this home due to the distance from the street and the applicant plans to coordinate the water service connection with the Water Department as necessary. In terms of conservation, so the applicant has filed for an administrative land disturbance permit and a stormwater management permit was issued on January 21st, 2020. And in terms of the Beta review comments, Beta noted that the, that there are well and resource areas on the property and they suggested that an order of conditions would be required. However, if you review the plan, all of the proposed work is located outside of the 100-foot bumper zone, so we should not need a notice of intent as they've suggested. And the stormwater facilities have been designed to infiltrate the first 1-inch of runoff from proposed impervious areas, which includes the driveway and roof area, which is concurrent with the town's stormwater requirements. And as previously noted, the Conservation issued a stormwater management permit for the project already. And the other comment pertains to just protection of the roadway from sedimentation, which is pretty much standard good housekeeping practice that the street will be swept and kept clean during construction period. So, the applicant is proposing to import some fill material in order to construct the home. Some of the material will be generated in the excavation for the foundation, but the remaining materials will be generated from the adjacent lot 3A, which is directly to the north of Lot 3B. These two lots were previously all one lot and were subsequently subdivided. So, they hope, the applicant hopes to generate some material from that adjacent lot. In so doing, they would reduce the amount of trucking of material onto the site. So...
Great. Thank you. There any board comments, starting with you, Chris?
So, you're, if I understand correctly, you're not entirely sure how much you may have to bring from outside, how much fill, until you excavate for the foundation and bring from the adjacent lot?
Yeah, so we did run an earthwork calculation, which was submitted with the application. So, the foundation excavation is going to generate roughly 700 cubic yards of material. And then there'd be a net import of 1,820 cubic yards of fill, plus an additional 300 cubic yards of gravel. And so, some of that fill, required fill volume may be reduced by material obtained from the adjacent lot.
But you're still going to be over a threshold for needing an earth material movement special permit?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
No, I have no other questions.
Deb?
No questions.
And Bill?
No, no questions.
Deb?
So, just going off of, Chris, so we don't, you don't know for sure if all the material will come, this will come from that other lot, right?
Some of the material will be able to be sourced from that lot, but the remaining required material would have to be brought in.
Right. Don't we need to have the condition certification of clean material?
You can impose that condition. In the past, the Planning Board has often imposed a condition that the fill to be imported would be a certification provided that doesn't contain any hazardous material.
Okay.
So, if you'd like, you could impose that condition.
Yeah, I think so.
I think that's a good idea.
But given that it's coming from a neighboring lot...
Yeah, I mean, that's why...
Is that a concern?
No, if it doesn't, if there's not enough on that lot...
Right, no, I know that. Anything coming from outside?
Correct.
It should be.
Okay, so you could clarify that.
Any additional needed?
Okay, Grant. Yeah, that was my question also. So, it looks like we, we have a few waivers needed, so for the traffic study, exterior lighting plan, and presentation model. So, is there any discussion with regards to that?
No issues.
And Deb, do you have the motion?
I make a motion to waive the application requirements for the submission of a traffic study, exterior lighting plan, and presentation model, as these materials are not necessary for a review of this project.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? So, we motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So, it passes 5 to 0. And then there's a list of conditions that we have. Would anybody like to read those through? Deb, did you want to?
Do you want, should we take public comment? Do you want to take public comment first?
Sure. Is there, is there anybody here from the public that would like to provide comment? Seeing none.
Yep. If you'd like to. So, the following conditions are, number one, the existing pavement on Storm Meadow Drive shall be protected from damage from loading and unloading of material and/or equipment related to the proposed construction. Crushed stone entrance shall be replaced when the stone becomes clogged with dirt or is no longer effective in preventing excess tracking of material into public way. Project-related construction and earth material movement shall comply with the town's general bylaws, Chapter 292, for noise and construction between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Sundays. All trucks carrying each earth material to or from 11 Storm Meadow Drive shall be required to access Storm Meadow Drive from the east from Summer Street via Long Meadow Drive only. All trucks shall be prohibited from traveling on the emergency connector between Stone Meadow Drive and Far Reach Road. Applicant is responsible for contacting the Denham Westwood Water District for water service. If the project or any condition imposed in this decision requires permit, license, or other approval from any other board, committee, or agency of the Town of Westwood, or other regulatory agency of the Commonwealth or the federal government, the applicant shall make an appropriate application for the same. If any condition of such permit, license, or other approval from any other board, committee, or agency is inconsistent with this decision, the applicant shall make application to the Planning Board for amendment of this decision, and the Planning Board shall consider such application in accordance with the requirements of MGL, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and all applicable Planning Board rules and regulations. Applicants shall promptly repair any damage which applicant causes to sidewalks, street pavements, signs, or other fixtures or features within the public right-of-way after obtaining permission from the town. Such repairs shall be performed to Town of Westwood standards. A copy of this decision and the project plan should be kept in the project site at all times during construction. And there shall be certification of any clean fill that needs to come in as being clean free of hazardous materials. Any questions on any of those? I make a motion to approve the EIDR earth material movement application filed by Mark Joyce for 11 Storm Meadow with the conditions previously listed.
Second? We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So, the motion passes 5 to 0. And then, motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close this public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? The hearing's closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
So, next on the agenda is Agenda Item 2, 85 Burgess Avenue, earth material movement, EIDR, public hearing.
Though I filled the appropriate paperwork out, I've been asked to recuse myself.
Okay.
Yes.
So, the applicant is seeking approval for an earth material movement to import fill to re-grad yard. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm here to represent really the owner of 85 Burgess. I'm facilitating a hardscape, re-landscape job of the property. The contractors, Eric Schultz, Tyson's here with us tonight too, if there's any questions. This property, I developed this, redeveloped this property a couple of years ago, and I was before you guys, and this property slopes, sloped more severe towards the rear from Burgess Ave. There's a lot of water runoff onto the property. So, this hardscape plan was developed partially to mitigate a lot of that water runoff, so there's a stone wall along the street, there's some regrading on the right side, or the left side if you're looking at it from the street. Also, the owners wanted to create a more level area for their yard, for their kids, so there's been some boulder walls built to retain. So far, 180 yards of earth that we've brought in on the right-hand side of the property. And when we got up to that, 10 trucks, we realized we're going to go over 200, so we filed with you and had American Engineering produce this drawing. In the meantime, and we've been delayed, I think we were supposed to be in front of you three times ago, so in that time, the owners have really expressed a need to create a play area on the other side of the property on the, because it doesn't fit. It's, the lot is not as deep as, you know, ideal for that, for that play area, so they want to also level out an area, you have the plans in front of you, on the left side to the rear left to create a playground area for the kids. So, that created additional material that needs to be brought in. So, it's up to more or less 800 yards total when the project's done. There was some concerns by the building inspector about height of a aluminum black fence, and so we, you know, I know he would require it anyways, and we're planning to supply him with an ASGIL when the project's done that would, that would conform to the zoning. That's it.
Great, thank you very much.
Welcome.
So, Abby, are there any staff comments or consultant comments that you wanted to share?
We did have Beta review this, and Beta did request also that a certified engineer provide, or a registered engineer provide certification that the boulder wall is structurally sound, as did the building commissioner. So, I'd recommend that be a condition of your approval.
Great, thank you. Chris, do you have any comments?
No. Oh, actually, I forgot one more. The application also needs a stormwater review by Conservation?
That's been filed.
Great. So, Chris, you're all set?
Yep. Deb, no comments?
And Bill, do you have any comments?
No.
Yeah, so my, my question was with regards to the wall, so to look at that, which, which item is that on the list? You mentioned that it was part of the conditions.
I suggest the condition number five. Applicant shall provide certification from an engineer.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. And so, do we, is there any comments from the public in the audience? Okay, seeing none.
Chairman, actually, we did get one just right before coming to this meeting from the Director Butter.
I did see that, yes.
She did also ask for, was concerned about the wall too, and supported the building commissioners and Beta's request for the certification for the wall. I think she also had some current concerns about the drainage with the regrading changes, and also had expressed support for preserving any trees or planting trees, if anywhere to be removed.
Yeah, so, and I've spoken with her and I read what was given, and start with the trees. I mean, I don't want to represent, there's three trees that need to come down, maybe the largest being 12-inch. Are they oaks or pines? Either way, you know, I don't want to represent that we're not going to take those down. We are. That's with the trees, they're well on the property of the applicant, or on the applicant, but they're well on the property of the owner.
Yeah.
The next one was, oh, drainage. So, and I explained this to her today, I mean, we've, we've created less, quite a bit less of a slope onto her property, so I think the water will permeate into the earth like more, quicker now when this project's done than it, than it would in the past, and she seemed to understand that part. There was another concern, what?
The wall, certification on the wall.
So, the wall is a, so we've done a few of these walls now, and the gray part of it is that there's not a building code on boulder walls, so that's why the certification comes up at the end, and it's come up in the past too. So, we know we have to do that.
Okay.
Joe wants a, and Beta, you know, they're not going to stamp it, so we need to have...
Yeah, we have that as one of the conditions.
Yeah, we need to have an independent engineer...
Sure.
...sign it at the end.
Great. So, thank you very much for that. So, we have a number of waivers, the exterior lighting plan, traffic study, presentation model, and drawings and renderings. Are there any board comments, thoughts to those? Great. Would someone like to make the motion for the waivers?
I move that we waive the application requirements for the submission of the traffic study, exterior lighting plan, and presentation model, because these materials are not necessary for review of this project to re-grad yard.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So, that motion passes 4 to 0. And then there's a list of conditions. Deb, would you like to list the conditions? Read them.
So, the condition number one, the existing, the existing pavement on Burgess Avenue shall be protected from damage from loading and unloading of material and/or equipment related to the proposed construction. Two, the crushed stone entrance shall be replaced when the stone becomes clogged with dirt or is no longer effective in preventing excess tracking of material onto public way. Three, project-related construction and earth material movement shall comply with the town's general bylaws, Chapter 292, for noise and construction between 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Sundays. Four, all trucks carrying earth material to or from 85 Burgess Avenue shall be required to access the street by a high street only. Five, the applicant shall provide a certification from a professional engineer that the walls were constructed in accordance with the detail and are structurally sound. Six, if the project or any condition imposed in this decision requires permit, license, or other approval from any other board, committee, or agency of the Town of Westwood, or other regulatory agency of the Commonwealth or the federal government, the applicant shall make an appropriate application for the same. If any condition of such permit, license, or other approval from any other board, committee, or agency is inconsistent with this decision, the applicant shall make application to the Planning Board for amendment of this decision, and the Planning Board shall consider such application in accordance with the requirements of MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and all applicable Planning Board rules and regulations. Seven, applicant shall promptly repair any damage which applicant causes to sidewalks, street pavements, signs, or other fixtures or features within the public right-of-way after obtaining permission from the town. Such repairs shall be performed to Town of Westwood standards. Eight, a copy of this decision, the project plan, shall be kept in the project site at all times during construction. I make a motion to approve the EIDR earth material movement application filed by Philip Palomo for 85 Burgess with these conditions of approval.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion from board members? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, passes 4 to 0. And does somebody want to make a motion to close the hearing?
I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and that passes 4 to 0. No abstentions.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
Okay, next on the agenda, Agenda Item 3, 600 Clapper Tree Street. It's a subdivision, release of performance guarantee for completion of work. And is the applicant here for that?
No, I don't see the applicant here. If you recall from your meeting in November, the applicant did request a release of the remaining funds, which is an amount of $18,573 that you were holding. You did hear from Beta in the fall that there was just two items remaining, and that was to replace some trees that had died and to repair a stone well that had been damaged. They have replaced those items and completed their work. Beta did go out and perform a final inspection and confirm that this work is, has been done. So, my recommendation is that you can release the remaining funds that was held for this subdivision. This was an old one-lot subdivision from 2014, and all the work is now completed.
Great, and do we need public comment for this?
It's not a public hearing.
Is there any board comments with regards to this release?
Nope.
Deb? Bill? Ev? So, Debbie, would you like to make the motion for 600 Clapper Tree Street subdivision?
Based on the certification of completion by Beta, I hereby move to recommend the release of all funds. The amount of $18,573 held by Denham Savings Bank in a passport account be released to Attorney Edward Richardson to be delivered to the homeowners of 594 Clapper Tree Street, Melanie Tanikas, and Stephen Caldroni for completion of work for subdivision at 600 Clapper Tree Street.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
And any further discussion from board members?
Nope.
Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So, that passes 4 to 0. So, that completes that. And so, moving on in the agenda, so Agenda Item 4, zoning amendment, article work session. So, we'll be reviewing the articles that have been, we've been discussing on ongoing basis over the last few months, and discuss these articles for a town meeting scheduled for May 2020. So, Abby, you provided us with a, there's a new article for discussion, so if somebody has information on this, if they would like to share with the board?
Right. Not a new article, but if you recall, the Select Board met last week and they would like to sponsor a reduced version of the medical use article, and they've asked for you to consider joining them in that sponsorship. What they're proposing is to, let me just put this on language, they're proposing a reduced version from what you had previously looked at, and their proposal includes removing, changing the definite, the references to office of a doctor or dentist, not a resident on premises, to healthcare professional, changing that in the use, the table of use chart, and also adding the medical center or clinic use to the table of uses. If you recall, that medical center or clinic use definition is currently in our zoning bylaw. It also exists in our University Ave overlay district, but it was missing from our table of uses. So, they're proposing to include that in the table of uses, also with a footnote in industrial zone that references the University Ave mixed-use district, and then change in the office of a doctor that's referenced in other locations, which is in the parking requirements and also in the FMUOD, to change office of a doctor or dentist to office of a healthcare professional. So, this is a reduced version. It does not have anything proposing changes to the hospital or the substance treatment center, but they would like to go forward with the medical center or clinic use, since that is currently referenced in our zoning bylaw. It's defined in the definitions, but it doesn't say where it is and is not allowed in the table of uses, and they believe it's important to go forward with that now. So, that's, they've sponsored that article and would like you to consider joining them.
Okay, so the, and this was discussed at last week's Select Board?
Select Board meeting. They also have another article that they're sponsoring that's related to a possible rezoning associated with the Obed Baker House and the abutting property on High Street. There's currently a bid out, a request for proposals. That's out right now, it's open, and we don't know what we'll receive, so they did submit, they have a placeholder on the warrant article submission, and have a couple of different options for possible rezoning depending on what comes back in response to the RFP that's currently out and closing later in the month.
And what were we, what was the, what were we looking for for the Obed Baker? And what were we, what was the, what were we looking for, for the Obed Baker House?
Well, we don't know the details yet, we've gone out to bid in the past, and some of the proposals that have come back have needed possible zoning changes. The RFP that's out right now includes preserving the exterior of the building, but we are looking for adaptive reuse of the building.
And, so, for the, are there any board questions, starting with you, Chris?
Questions about the Select Board? No, I don't have any questions about what Abby just said.
And Dave, do you have any questions?
Go.
On the medical uses, so, it's, it's not going to be a hospital or clinic, is that what we're saying?
We do have a definition in our zoning bylaw right now that does have, let me just pull up that definition, it says, in our zoning bylaw right now, currently, it says "medical center or clinic, a building designed and used for the diagnosis and treatment of human patients that does not include substance rehabilitation or overnight care facilities." So, it's not the overnight days, but it's, it's a higher level than what would be office of a healthcare professional.
Any other questions, Bill?
And, these would be in the same overlay districts that you proposed before?
No, we have it as proposed in the table of uses, saying it's not allowed anywhere except for in the University Ave mixed-use overlay district.
Did you want to pull up the table? That might be helpful. It's on page two.
So, it's proposed with the N means "no," not allowed across, but then adding the footnote for it to be allowed in only the University Ave mixed-use overlay district, where it is, it's currently, that's where we first noticed it, was when we were reviewing the Brigham Women's Project a couple of years ago, that's when we noticed medical center and clinic is currently in the overlay district, but wasn't in the table of uses that applies to all the other zoning districts, the base zoning. So, what this article is doing is saying it's not allowed in other locations.
It's allowing it to continue where it's always been.
Yeah, but clarifying.
But clarifying that you can't go anywhere else in town with this.
Yes.
Before, it was open to interpretation or questionable as to whether they could move it.
Yes, so this helps, when we had looked at this the last couple of years, we were concerned if someone were to propose it in one of these other locations, for example, another business area, we didn't have it listed in the table of uses to say it could not go there.
And we're changing it because?
Because it wasn't mentioned in the table of uses, so if the use is not mentioned, it could, we would be vulnerable to a charge, someone could apply for one of those uses in another, in one of these other districts and say that, make a claim.
In the PowerPoint presentation that you had, now where it could go, anywhere, is that, was the?
I think it's, I believe that this article is different than, this is a significantly reduced.
Yes, it is very much reduced from what you've seen in the past.
The other one had the definitions of, there were four definitions.
Yep, there's two new definitions, so this is not.
So, this has changed that article like 100%?
No, no, a much smaller change, because we do have in our definitions in the zoning bylaw for medical center or clinic, but we don't actually have anything in our table of uses saying where that use is allowed. And so, it's important to say where it's allowed, because if we don't, someone could propose it in another location that, such as local business zone, which is High Street or Washington Street, and we don't have a clear method of saying yes or no, so this is saying it cannot be allowed in the local business district.
Dave, do you have any questions?
So, the only thing, when we look back at last year, we tried to change these definitions, and when medical center or clinic says "except in accordance with all applicable revisions of Section 9.7," yet we were told last year that substance abuse centers, rehab's are a, is a subsection of a medical center, so is that contradictory? If we say in the, in the medical center or clinic that it's not a substance abuse facility or treatment facility, and then it's considered a subcategory of that, is that, is that conflicting?
I don't believe that's what we said last year, I know we were looking at adding other definitions, and the concern was that the substance abuse treatment facility, that could be considered a protected, a protected class for use, so that's why we thought it was important to update that definition. So, we don't have that in there, I think we are still vulnerable without those two other definitions, but this article has not taken that on this time, so I think we'd have to revisit that at a future town meeting and propose additional, additional changes.
Okay, so this is all that's on the table right now, everything else that was in the newspaper is not.
Right.
Included in this.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions, I'm just gonna go back in and look at the definitions, but thank you for this. I think it would be helpful if this is, if this material will go forward, is to add in the definitions, just so that somebody doesn't have to, like, so I'm gonna go back and, so just add in, add in those definitions for the presentation if you're gonna share back. Okay, so that is, that covers the two Select Board articles.
Yes.
And, so, Article 1, this is the renting of rooms for residential properties, adding a definition for short-term, so that would be five to 29 days. So, the, the concept here was for, for short-term rentals to adding in a restriction for, so that you have to rent for five or greater days. I think in the future, it'd be nice to have an article that talks about the registration and any types of inspections that are required, like that other towns are doing, but for now, this is, this is the only article for that.
Just, can I just ask one question? What help, did they meet on that today, did they, was that on their agenda?
They did have it on their agenda.
Discussion was about, or?
I don't know that they had too much discussion on it. I know they met right before I came in here. Let's see, let's see, I'm in here, the meeting. I think they s-
Maybe we could just get the minutes from it for the next?
I could, I can find out, I think what they, when I spoke with the director before the meeting, he says, you know, it's something that, it's usually a general bylaw, but then there's also the local various boards would also may have to take on adopting any kind of regulations that would be related. So, it would be, one step would be a general bylaw, and then different departments and different boards would then need to take on additional responsibility and just kind of work out.
That makes sense.
Details of who's responsible for what.
Any further comments from board members?
Yeah, I was wondering, maybe this is, so renting of rooms, I mean, does that automatically include the entire house, or does this only apply to individual rooms?
Reduce, what we had in our existing definition still remains, renting of rooms by resident owner, or the furnishings of table and board in a dwelling by resident owner to not more than three persons other than members of the, of the family. So, that's what we have existing today.
So, with this, so if you wanted to, if you wanted to rent your house for the weekend, then that's even, like, you're renting the whole place, not just one room or something, does that fall under the prohibited item here, rent of a room for fewer than five days?
Yes, I believe it would.
Does convert that, it's not just one room?
Is there no legal distinction between renting of rooms and renting of entire home within this bylaw?
I don't believe so, I mean, I'd want to check it with the building commissioner, but I, I believe it would apply, if you went away for a weekend, it would be the whole property.
So, the, the next article is Article 4, so this is zoning amendment related to prohibitive uses, so this is no, no change since our last meeting. Are there any comments from board members? Seeing none. Then, Article 5, this is zoning map amendment relative to Morrison Park and Field, so again, no change since our previous meeting. Are there any?
Well, we did have an update with the Select Board, they are looking into an Article 97, that is the state protection of, parkland protection, so that is a state process that would have to go through, but they're looking into that, they have included that in the warrant for this town meeting, I don't know, that'll be ready, but they are looking to do that to help achieve that desired permanent protection of the field. So, that is still a process that needs local adoption and then the state process.
Great, thank you. So, the next item is Article 6, so a zoning amendment relative to forums, explosive sales and services, same as the other, so no change in the language since the previous meeting. Does any board members have any questions or comments? Seeing none. So, that, and then our next planning board meeting will be a public hearing.
Yep, so your next meeting, the 25th, is official public hearing, and then the following week is the Finance and Warrant Commission's public hearing, so at your hearing on the 25th, you usually, we'd recommend you make, vote to make a recommendation to the Finance and Warrant Commission, so that you go to their meeting with a recommendation.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
FinCom is Tuesday night?
What's that?
FinCom is following Tuesday?
I forget if it's the second, oh, it's Tuesday, the 2nd.
I have, FinCom is also on, yeah, Monday, the 2nd.
Tuesday is probably their overflow.
Oh, hold on, they, they usually have, oh, sorry, it starts on Monday, the 2nd, and then continues to Tuesday, the 3rd, if not completed on the Monday evening.
Great. So, then, to other business, so, the first item there is, we've received some open meeting law complaints, so, the last week, last week, town planner Abby McCabe provided me with two open meeting violation complaints against the planning board that were received in her office. I asked Abby McCabe to forward a copy of both complaints to all members of the planning board, and then I followed up with a separate email containing both complaints, if any of the board members did not receive a copy. I have one here, so did everybody receive the?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. In response to these complaints, I amended the agenda for tonight to include this matter as other business. I want to give everyone the opportunity to fully review the material. There appears to be some confusion regarding the intent of the motion. Given that this is a time-sensitive matter that is governed by statutory law timelines, I'm going to schedule a meeting for the sole purpose of addressing these complaints and the concerns related to the underlying vote by the planning board on January 28th, 2020. I believe that this will give the members of the planning board the opportunity to fully review the complaints and the underlying vote of the board. So, I initially was going to schedule this for next Tuesday, so I was hoping that we could do it next Tuesday night at 7:00 p.m. here. So, is everybody available for that night? Dave?
I'm not.
Chris is not available? Abby, you available for that night?
Yes, that's Tuesday, the 18th, that's the day after the holiday.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Lauren Goldberg from KP Law, thank you. So, I just wanted to outline the process for dealing with an open meeting law complaint briefly. Essentially, the board has to acknowledge receipt of the complaints and analyze the application of the law and the facts, and then make a decision as to how to resolve that complaint. There's a number of variations on how something can be resolved, and so, that would come from the board's discussion. At that point, there has to be a response sent to the complainants, and then also a copy sent to the Attorney General's Office, and in addition, then the complainants have the ability to respond by appealing that as well to the Attorney General's Office after 30 days. So, the board's timeframe for a response is 14 business days, which I believe takes us to the 26th.
Yeah, I believe it's the Wednesday after.
That's right, yeah. Yep, so the 26th, and if there was a need for an extension of any kind, that is typically allowable, as long as the request is made prior to the expiration of the 14 days. So, if you needed to change the date of that meeting, we have the ability to request an extension as needed. And, I, just in case, I should introduce myself as well to, I've served as special counsel to the town on several other occasions, in connection with the charter and in connection with town meetings, so I hope I'm not a completely foreign face, but it is, you know, I have worked with the town over the years in a special counsel capacity.
Yeah, so, given the timeline, it's important that we move on this to, to discuss it as a board with relation to the, the motion. So, so as far as next Tuesday, we have four of the five board members available, so is that, Chris, is that, are you able to call in for that? That's something you can do remotely?
I, no, I would not be able to, to call in. I'm gonna be out of the country, and I will not have the opportunity to make a phone call.
So, do we, do we need to move forward with?
Mr. Chairman, so, what's the question, I'm sorry?
So, as far as moving forward with, with four of five board members, obviously, I'd like everybody to be in attendance.
Yeah, it would be sufficient for purposes of the open meeting law to have a majority of the board, but certainly, if you'd like everyone to be in attendance, we can ask for a, an extension from the Attorney General to give you time to schedule a, a meeting for that purpose. So, you'd have until the 26th, I believe that next week is school vacation week, and the week after, so the week after that is the 26th.
You have until the 26th to request?
You have until? You have, yes, we have, we have that time. They, they do like to get the request earlier rather than later, certainly, vacations or people being out of the country are understandable reasons for a request for extension.
Sure you'd like to speak?
Good evening, my name is Ernest Swan, I'm an attorney representing Brian Gorman, my partner is Thomas Olafland, and I believe Debbie Connet also has counsel here.
Yes.
And, and your name?
Tom Ralph.
Tom Ralph is also here, and we haven't had a chance to speak, but I'm sure he'll agree, we would want all of the members present at that time.
So, why don't we go through our calendars now to see if we can find a date?
I will not return until March the 3rd.
Ryan, I'll make myself available, so whatever you come up with for a date, I'll be there.
So March the third, second night of Fincom.
Mr. Chairman, just as an FYI, March the third is the, um, state primary, although the planning board isn't prohibited from having a meeting on that day. The president's preference.
There's another, there's another meeting that day anyway. So it's not even, not even an option. So how about the, um, March fifth?
Is that a Tuesday still? Are these all Tuesdays?
Thursday.
Oh, the Thursday?
Yeah. Fifth probably doesn't work for me.
The fifth doesn't? Or how about the, the fourth, March fourth?
Fourth I could do. I'm available.
Dan?
Yeah.
Are you available on the fourth?
Fourth.
Yeah.
That's Wednesday?
March fourth, yes, for today.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it would make sense then to ask for an extension through the sixth. Whatever you vote on the night of the fourth, we'd have a chance to write up and then make sure it got over to the Attorney General by the sixth. So I would ask for an extension until the sixth, if that pleases the board.
Is that, um, should the, should the extension go beyond that in case, um, in case additional time is needed? I just don't, uh...
Um, okay, if we were going to ask, I, I think we could say we were aiming for the sixth, but if we need that extra time for any reason, we could ask for it through the next Friday. Typically, they're okay with us asking for an extension as long as we explain the reason. So I don't think it would be unheard of to get an extension that, that is that long.
And are you, are you all okay with the, um, with the, the extension to the, the extension to the sixth is fine?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But I will put them on notice that we may ask for another extension, um, on the fifth after you meet on the fourth.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, so March fourth it is. Great.
Seven P. M.?
Seven P. M. And there, there'll be a notice, um, for that also.
Mr. Chairman, and at the risk of being overly formula, formalistic, perhaps a vote to authorize me to make that request on behalf of the board, just so that we have it for the record.
Does somebody want to make that motion?
Lauren Goldberg.
I make a motion that, um, the board allow Lauren Goldberg to make the request to the Attorney General's Office to extend the meeting, um, the, apply to March sixth, two thousand twenty.
Uh, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, so, all those in favor?
Hi.
I oppose, stand. Uh, thank you.
Can I still talk about this, or can I make a statement? No, okay.
So I would go to, so the next item is the comprehensive plan update. So it sounds like there's been some movement there, Abby?
Yes, we did have an open house yesterday, um, at the senior center. It was very well attended. We had about fifteen to twenty residents come on by, um, senior center. We were there from noon to three o'clock, and we are offering another open house on Thursday, this Thursday, that's the thirteenth, from four to seven at the library. It's, um, very, if anyone wants to come and talk to us about their ideas, what they'd like to see incorporated, myself and some of the committee members will be there to hear from them, um, and then also talk to them about what we've been doing, um, so that we can incorporate comments into a revised draft coming back to you, um, hopefully in the spring.
In the meeting minutes, I'd like to move those to the next meeting because I haven't had time to look at those. Uh, the next item is Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, so an annual conference for board members, Saturday, March twenty-first, at Holy Cross. So is, as far as signing up for this, Abby, is it, uh, is this a free conference or?
No, they didn't, registration wasn't open, but it is usually pretty affordable. I think it's around usually the fifty-dollar, um, range. They said it would be opening registration, I think it said mid, um, February, so we'll be looking up for that. Um, but it is very affordable. Um, we do have money in the budget to send, um, planning board members. It's usually starts around nine P. M. and I think usually goes to around three o'clock or so. A. M., sorry, A. M., nine A. M. to three P. M. They do have lunch and usually snacks throughout the day, so it's, it's very informative. It's designed for planning board and zoning board members.
Great, thank you. Uh, so that, uh, brings us to the end of the agenda, so, um, if somebody wants to call the... Oh, sure.
Hi there, Bob DeHardy, um, fifty Hawthorne Street. Regarding the medical use article that you were talking about earlier, what does that mean for the Meditech property? Or it sounded like what you were saying is that everything would be restricted to the university Ave, um, but I've just heard that the Meditech facility might still be on the table. So what does, what was resolved here, or what you're talking about doing here around the medical use? How does that relate to the Meditech properties? Are they still in play as potential locations?
Yeah, so the, the select board has an article that they've...
Right, there's nothing specific to the Meditech properties or their zoning districts that they're in. Um, they, the Meditech properties in town are in a different zone, A. R. O. Um, in the past, we've had, um, zoning articles proposed with, um, allowing some of these other medical uses there, but this article does not at this time, um, because it's only focused on the medical centers. Um, so it's not allowed in the A. R. O. zoning district, which those properties are in. But we also don't have definitions for the hospital and substance abuse treatment center that we've talked about before, so that's still unmentioned in our zoning.
Yeah, so it, it looks different than it looked, um...
A year, a year.
Even like a month ago. Um, so I just received this tonight to, to do my research. Is that, is this presentation online for public?
Right, right. This was posted, um, to the website on, um, February fourth, and it was, um, in the newspaper last week, so it is available, and planning board members did receive it in, in their packets last week. So we do have that full article language, um, that I can provide you.
Do you know how to navigate the website to get material?
I mean, if I have challenges, I'm certain I can ask you guys.
Because if you wait till after the meeting, I can get your number and I can let you, I can walk you through it because there's a, and then you can actually see what is being proposed.
Okay, because, so, you know, because what I heard here tonight is it sounded like everything was restricted to the university, um, university Ave property, but what I'm, what I'm hearing though from you guys in the clarification is that there is still kind of an open item around the definition of...
There are two open items. There were four. This is proposing to close two.
Okay.
Hospital and substance of treatment facility are still out there. So, yes, an applicant could come and go anywhere and, and apply anywhere. That's not protected yet. Tried, didn't work. Select Board said, we'll pick up this article, but we'll, we'll, we'll address these two. We're not going to address hospital and substance abuse. So they're trying to address this because they see this as a, as an exposure for the town, fiscally and otherwise. So they're addressing these two issues of the four that were out there a year ago. So, and what they're saying is the medical center or clinic can only go down a, a section of University Avenue. And it's always been able to go down there, but now they're saying, and you can't go anywhere else. So that will not go if this passes by town meeting. It will not go at Meditech, um, nor will the Office of Healthcare Professional. Actually, it, that is currently, it always has been an A. R. O., right? We just changed the definition.
So I can, I can meet you with you after the meeting and, and show you where the information is so that you're fully aware of that.
Okay.
And then there will be hearings, uh, when is the next?
Um, the planning board will have their public hearing at their next meeting on, um, February twenty-fifth, here at seven P. M. So that's when the, um, tonight was, they're kind of talking about, this is getting ready for the public hearing, but the pub, planning board will have their full public hearing in two weeks on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, okay. Thanks.
I'm sure.
Good evening. Nada Milasov-Lavich Fabrizio. Um, please bear with me, I use a device that has a tendency to squeak. The medical use article. This has been going around in circles now, um, since two thousand seventeen, I think. I'm the one that wrote the letter to the Attorney General in case people aren't aware of who I am. Um, I don't understand, first I looked in our zoning bylaws, and I don't see the definition for Office of Healthcare Professional. I see Office of Doctor or Dentist, and, um, that looks like a new term because it's redlined. My second question, uh, maybe that should be answered by someone. Abby, maybe?
Is that in a, can it exist? I don't see it.
It's in, I know it's in. It's just in, on any definition, yeah.
I don't have the zoning bylaws really.
Section two point O., I think.
We do, I'm just looking for it. I don't see N. or O.
I don't think it's existed. I don't think it's existed.
We have, um...
Is, is the definition of dentist or healthcare professional different from?
That's what I'm looking for.
Doctor or dentist. Definition.
Wait, we do, we have Office of Healthcare Professional. We do have that in the bylaw already.
Can you see that?
It's already in here, yeah, page three dash thirteen.
Oh, yes, okay, yes, I see that.
My question is why, if it's there, why is it there? Because this looks like it's brand-new language.
Right.
And everywhere else throughout our zoning bylaws, I'm sorry if there's an echo, but everywhere else throughout our zoning bylaws, it doesn't say, it doesn't refer to Office of Healthcare Professional. Everything says doctor or dentist. I'm trying to figure out when that, when that passed town meeting for a bylaw change.
Well, that's what we're doing now. So I see, we do have, I see it as on page three dash thirteen. We have existing Office of Healthcare Professional definition, and that's what this change is trying to do, is to make it more consistent, to remove the language of Office of a Doctor or Dentist, not on premises, and change it to, um, Office of Healthcare Professional.
So we never adopted Office of Healthcare Professional. Right now, our zoning bylaw says Office of Doctor or Dentist, uh, defined. Is that what it says?
No, we actually do have a, um, definition for Office of Healthcare Professional. And that's how it kind of came about in two thousand seventeen. We noticed we had terms referenced in other locations of the bylaw and defined in some places, and the whole goal of bringing these changes forward was to be consistent with our definitions and our use charts.
So this is to get rid of doctor or dentist and kind of absorb it into healthcare professional?
Yes.
And it won't change the use chart as?
Right. It's changing the title on the use chart, but it's still...
Getting rid of, you won't see in our bylaws anymore, Office of Doctor or Dentist.
I guess my point is, excuse me, we have right now, I'm sorry, these things drive me crazy, we have right now Office of Doctor or Dentist, which is defined, a doctor, M.D., a dentist, D.D.S. or whatever. Office of Healthcare Professional, did I, did you provide a definition that tells me and everyone else, what is a healthcare professional? What does it include, is my question?
It includes...
So we're changing this one. Right now, we only allow doctors and dentists, technically, right?
So page three thirteen, the definition of, um, Office of Healthcare Professional is an office for a medical doctor, dentist, psychologist, chiropractor, acupuncturist, or similar physical or mental health professional, including clinical and laboratory analysis activities directly associated with such medical office use, but excluding offices of medical centers or clinics.
So what we're doing is we're saying, I'm sorry, we're saying, instead of just a doctor or a dentist, now we can have the entire field of, uh, medicine come and do procedures anywhere? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Because it's not, it's not a hospital, but it's not just somewhere where I'm going to have my blood pressure, pressure checked.
No.
So I'd like to know what's going on in these offices of healthcare professionals and where they're going to be.
Can I ask, kind of, what's the root of your concern?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask you, what is the root of your concern? Like, what's the thing you're worried about?
I'm sorry.
I just want, can you, can you say like what you're concerned about, of what you're...
Well, it goes back to the concern that this gentleman has in the blue jacket about, um, rehabilitation, drug rehab. And I guess, I, with all due respect to the, um, J.D.s that are in this room, I'm not a lawyer, but we have, I'm trying to find on the website, and this is, this relates to this. Um, we had Special Counsel Diane Bailey, who wrote a memo, I'm sorry, I'm going to find it in one second. He wrote a memo in March. Uh, Dave, Dave Atkins, you asked the question to Diane Bailey. What is, oh, is a drug treatment zone required zoning? Now, there's a letter floating around somewhere, it, that was written in March of two thousand nineteen by Special Counsel Diane Bailey to you, but it's not on the website. And I think what happens is I hear, I think, I believe, perhaps, nothing is definite. We have not gotten an answer on whether or not we need to define these, these projects, if you will, and then all of a sudden, we have to put it in our use table. If we don't have it, I don't see how someone can just come in if it's not a, a definition and not a use.
Nada?
So I think that we've been going around and around, and again, I don't want to take up your time, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, but this is like, this is serious, and we need to know what is, um, what was the catalyst? That this was pushed through before people realized what happened.
I'm not trying to cut you off, I just want to say.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear and talk at the same time.
Okay. Nada, I, we haven't had a chance to absorb this, we just got this, okay? So, um, and, and we hear you, as far as we want to get into this.
Okay. I just, I'm, I just hope, excuse me, I hope you're not taking a vote on this tonight.
Oh, no, no, we, this is gone, this is, this wasn't even a public hearing, the, the medical part, we're just talking about...
Well, actually, this is, this is an article by the select board.
Yes, it's not our...
... unable to do its job and ask what it needed to pass.
But the planning board is going to have to make a recommendation.
Yes, we're going to, we're going to get into this on the...
Meeting two.
Was it twenty-seven?
One person speaking at a time.
Sorry.
So Nada, is your, have you addressed your...
I just, I just, I want, I'm concerned, and I'm concerned like the residents that are sitting here, they're concerned. This, this town is, it, it's turning into a city, um, and I just want to make sure that residents' quality of lives are protected in this town. That's why people moved here. That's why people raised their children here.
Thank you.
Um, and I think that's it. Thank you. But I would like to see, um, Special Counsel Bailey's March two thousand nineteen opinion, legal opinion, on whether or not, um, uh, sorry, is a drug, is a drug treatment zone required zoning? And I'd like to see that opinion letter because that's a legal opinion. I'm sorry, but I don't trust these, I think, I believe, perhaps, maybe, it's just, we need, we need definitive answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Almeida?
Barbara Shea for Team Cardinal Drive. Um, I wanted to echo the previous two speakers with my confusion, and I apologize, I missed the last couple of meetings that you had where this might have been discussed about the medical use. I thought there was some sense of urgency that the medical definitions and the zones in which those specific definitions of medical uses could be located. Um, and I thought your board was doing that article, but have you completely dropped it and now just the select board is doing this abbreviated version? Is that what I heard tonight?
Yes, the planning board...
And for what purpose did they decide to do that abbreviated version? I guess I'm not going...
At, at the last meeting, the planning board voted to withdraw their, the article that they had originally submitted, which was more extensive than what you see here today. Um, and then since that time, the select board, um, since the select board can also sponsor warrant articles, they did, um, review this at their meeting last week and, um, agreed to, um, bring forward a... Yes.
And for what purpose did they decide to do that abbreviated version? I guess I'm echoing.
At, at the last meeting, the planning board voted to withdraw their, the article that they had originally submitted, which was more extensive than what you see here today. And then since that time, the Select Board, since the Select Board can also sponsor more articles, they did review this at their meeting last week and agreed to bring forward a reduced article. So, it's not the full extent of what the planning board was trying to do at the last couple of meetings in the last couple of years. So, it is a reduced version going forward by the Select Board, but the planning board does need to hold public hearings for all zoning amendments, no matter who it comes from. So, that's scheduled for the 25th.
Thank you.
So, a few meetings ago, I remember Nora standing up and saying how important it was to deal with this medical use question, and a meeting or two before that, there was, I think the BI has a new facility coming into Westwood, somewhere in the Islington area, that everybody was happy about, and that's going to be good, but there was some question of whether that could ever morph into a substance abuse facility. And I bet all of us personally know someone who has a substance abuse problem, and all of us have compassion for anybody who may have had that tragedy in their lives or in their families, but all of us also are concerned about something happening in our neighborhood. So, that's what, I guess, everyone here is questioning and wanting to have clarity on, and it sounds like it's getting more confusing rather than more clarified as we approach town meeting. And I think coming up with something that doesn't have proper definitions to put in the zoning bylaw, scrambling at the last minute, whether it's the Select Board or this board, might have unintended consequences of opening up the town to something that might not be intended, that might not be appreciated, so.
I, I feel, I hear a lot of confusion, obviously. People have taken the microphone with that confusion, I understand that. First off, is I, the healthcare professional definition is in our bylaw. It has been. And what we're doing is bringing in Office of Doctor or Dentist, and being that, a part of that. Mr. Atkins read the definition of a healthcare professional. The use chart, where those...
It sounds very loose to me, the, that definition, and I thought the intent of the...
The one he read?
Yeah, like, or related...
That's what's in our bylaw.
Yes.
That exists, town law, town meeting passed that already.
Right, so that's why I thought you were seeking to amend the bylaw.
All we're doing is...
To clarify locations, particularly around, you're prohibited, anything that's not specifically mentioned, it will be prohibited, that language in your proposed, is that gone too? The proposed prohibitive language for the bylaw?
That is one of the, that's one of the articles under discussion.
The ones you were sponsoring, right? Does that relate in any way to this medical?
Well, again, I, I got the impression a year ago, people were most concerned with substance treatment facility. They weren't overly concerned with hospital, hospitals are big, they take a lot of...
So, you're stepping away from the substance abuse question, though?
No, 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 let me...
Okay, sorry.
I presented a medical use bylaw amendment. The board voted to not sponsor it, three to two. The Select Board picked up that amendment, reduced it from addressing four issues, two of which are here, and they're addressing two of them. The hospital and substance abuse treatment facility, they are not addressing. It was addressed in my proposal, that didn't get picked up by the planning board. It is not being addressed by the Select Board. They're choosing to address the changing of the Office of Doctor and Dentist to Healthcare Professional, and then they're, they're defining medical center or clinic, and where that can go. And with regard to that particular thing, it's always been in our bylaw, and always been able to go to University Avenue section. All they're doing here is saying, "And you can't go anywhere else," which I think is what people are really hoping for, is to define where can these things go. That's what this article is saying. Your medical center or clinic, as of today, can go anywhere. After town meeting, if this passes, it can only go to University Avenue, the medical center or clinic. The substance abuse treatment facility, it had been regarded on this board by addressing it, by zoning it, we were inviting it. It's not the case. That's not what zoning is. Zoning is planning. We weren't inviting it, we were preparing for it.
Right, like the adult use section.
Exactly. This board voted three to two against my proposal, so now it's hanging out there and can go literally into your neighbor's house. It can go anywhere. We've been vulnerable to this forever. Now, it's a hotbed of activity within our state. So, now we're trying to address it. It can go, it can be applied for anywhere. And our prohibitive use, our prohibitive language, doesn't apply to substance abuse. It's a protected class. So, thinking we're protected by a prohibitive language, line in our bylaw, we're not protected from this. It can go in any zone, because we haven't identified it.
So, I did understand what was going on. It's worse rather than better.
It's not great, but this, the Select Board is saying, "We can, we think we can move these two things through." You'd have to talk to them and ask, "Why did you reduce it from four to two?" I don't know, this is now their article, it's not ours. So, we don't know why they did, they would have to answer to that. But we do, we are familiar with these two things, because they were on the table pretty much exactly the whole time, and this is almost exactly as it was, if not exactly, from 2017.
Yeah, I mean, what happened back a year ago was, we, we had a huge public hearing at Downey, and people were very upset about the substance abuse, and we pulled that out of the article, and we kind of scaled it back to this, and tried to just say, "We've already got these things defined, let's zone them out of these districts." So, here's the table of uses, where they're not allowed, or where they are allowed. And that's what's, this is just trying, we were thinking, okay, the controversial thing, we can't seem to get an agreement on that. This is like medical center or clinic, nowhere except University Ave. Okay, let's lock that down. And then the healthcare professional defined it here by appeal, Board of Appeals for GR was...
General Residence.
So, again, like, change, make it more specific. Instead of saying doctor or dentist, it's the, it's everything that's listed in that healthcare professional. So, it's kind of, they're trying to, I don't want to speak for them, but we were trying to scale it back to something, to get at least something accomplished versus the big thing that was so controversial that we, that people couldn't come to agreement on.
But I guess if it's controversial, it wasn't controversial because people didn't, some did and some didn't want it to be available to go anywhere in town, I guess, I don't know, it'll take you too long.
I feel there was confusion over, we really wanted to prevent it from going to town. Some people felt that by defining it, we're inviting it to town, and that that was kind of where the conflict arose.
So, do you have, I can invite you to the podium.
Hi, Sandra Casteldini, 54 Birch Street. I guess my question is, I know this came up in 2017, and then it was in town meeting in the fall, and it got overturned because of the technicality. So, we've got 2017, 2018, 2019, and part of 2020. Have we been approached as a town to try to put one of these facilities in the town?
So, Abby, you would be the best to know that.
No, we haven't, but we want to make sure we have it in our zoning bylaw, in case one comes in, then we are open to an argument from an applicant to argue that if it's not defined, then therefore it could go in a similar location, or they could submit an appeal.
Yeah, I just feel like it's kind of a threat tactic, because here's some towns, I was doing some research, that don't have a definition or zone for substance abuse. Weston, Medfield, Concord, Duxbury, Sudbury, Hingham, Bedford, Dover, Sherburne, Holliston, Medway. I mean, I'd, I'd put ourselves in that category. I know Dedham just recently put it in, but I wouldn't put ourselves in like a Dedham category. And so, I just feel like this is kind of an economic development issue. Somebody's putting this in place, because it may happen, and they want to have a place for it, and we're going to make some money off of it. And instead, I think we should not touch it, and if it comes our way, we have all of these checks and balances in place, so that it doesn't end up in somebody's neighborhood.
We don't have any checks and balances. We have nothing, and we won't make any money on, because these are largely nonprofits, so they don't pay taxes. We're, we're flying naked right now, we really are, and I know people don't want to have the ugly discussion about where do you put it? We're a bedroom community. Show me anywhere in our town that doesn't somehow relate. We had people bring up the industrial office space by the Shell on Route 1. How about back there? People complained it was too close to the Downey School, up a hill through the trees. If, if that's not removed, where is removed in our town? Nowhere.
So, unlike the adult section, that's required to have something put in the law, right? To have somewhere...
I don't think so.
Is that, that's required? I thought that's what the town lawyer said, I was watching a previous meeting. So, I know, I'm pretty sure this is not required, so I just want to put it out there. I'm just really concerned that the Select Board picked it up after it was already voted on by a majority that the planning board.
But the Select Board's not even touching the substance abuse treatment facility. So, they're, they're not, they're not addressing this issue.
I think that, I think that it's, the language is, is being kept vague, and it's, it's going to allow for something rather than keep it out. That's just my personal...
So, I don't think, the argument that there are other towns that have failed to zone something is that that's a good thing, is, I can point to what happened in Dedham, different use entirely, but the lack of zoning, the lack of a failure to zone, the failure to zone specifically for gun shops caused that to fall under retail uses. And so, when people were concerned about a gun shop opening, they had no way to prevent it from happening. They changed their zoning at that point after the fact, to define that use to a specific area. And that's kind of, that's the way we're looking at this, in terms of, if it's not defined, then you're open to it potentially being proposed anywhere. It's harder to prevent something that you don't want, so why not go ahead and define it?
So, it used to have the zoning where the mental health facility was, but now that's a 55 and plus neighborhood, right?
That was residential.
Yep, so I just feel like, maybe we took it off there, and now we're just trying to find a place to put it somewhere else.
We never had it there, that was underlying residential zone, they were essentially grandfathered in. As soon as they sold it, they lost that grandfather clause. So, we're trying to plan. That's what zoning is. We're seeing the future, trying to attract some businesses, trying to make it really hard for some business to come, to come into town sometimes. We can't keep out businesses, just because we don't like the nature of their use. And as we said, the substance abuse facilities are a protected class. We can't just say, "We don't like what happens there, so you can't come."
Thanks for helping us plan, I just think we have more important economic endeavors than finding a place for this. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand. Thank you.